Twenty-seventh Planning Board Meeting to Order. And Paul, you've got to read the disclaimers or whatever.
I'll try to do it from memory.
Yeah, right. Do you accept prompts if you mess up?
In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law related to the 2020 Noble Conal First Outbreak Emergency, April 7th, one, public meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be televised via Falmouth Community Television. Two, real-time public comment can be addressed to the Planning Board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the Chair via the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. Pocket instructions. Instructions and the meeting link for this specific meeting can be found at the following web address. www.falmouthma.gov backslash planning. Please allow 10 to 15 minutes of preparation time to log in, though maybe less if you've previously used Zoom on the device you will use to access the meeting. Three, additionally, public comments may be sent in advance to the meeting through planning@falmouthma.gov at least five hours prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents and audio and video files may also be submitted via email. Many email comments and documents will be made a part of the meeting record and may be read into the record, summarized, or displayed during the meeting at the discretion of the Chair. Four, applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the Planning Board may appear remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the Planning Board may contact the Planning Department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if unable to use the Zoom virtual meeting software. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov so that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing.
Thank you. And Paul, again, the minutes of February 13th and April 6th.
I recommend approval of the minutes of February 13th, 2021, the joint meeting, and April 6th, 2021, as corrected.
So both of them as corrected or just? Paul, were they both corrected or just the April 6th?
Just the second one, just April 6th.
Okay. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Does anybody have any comments on it? Show approval by raising your hand, please. Okay, 100%, all seven of us approving it. First on the agenda are Planning Board decisions. The first one is the applicant, Joseph and Kathleen Murphy, Site Plan Review application to permit an accessory apartment above the attached garage at 59 Worcester Court. And you all have had that in your packet, the motion. May I have somebody read the motion, please? Charlotte?
A motion that the Planning Board votes to approve the application of Joseph and Kathleen Murphy trustees to raise the existing dwelling and construct a new single-family home with an attached one-bedroom accessory unit above the garage located at 59 Worcester Court under Article 39 Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for plan entitled Plot Plan for Number 59 Worcester Court Prepared for Joe Murphy and Falmouth. Prepared by Falmouth Engineering dated October 26, 2020, with most recent revision date of November 23, 2020, scale of 1 inch to 20 feet, along with architectural plans and elevations with the following conditions. The first four conditions are the standard conditions. The plan should be constructed as approved. The principal dwelling or the accessory apartment must be owner-occupied for a period of seven months in every calendar year. The principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not both during the five months. The owner-occupant may be absent, and the construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control conditions. There are two additional conditions. Number five, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this resident per Section 99-1 of fixing illegible number required time limit for compliance. And six, the applicant shall install dry wells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measures for the new house.
May I have a second? Second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, please show your approval by raising your hand. Okay, seven out of seven, thank you. And the next approval is Buzzards Bay Development LLC Site Plan Review Modification Application to Construct Multifamily Dwellings Adding Over 1,000 Square Feet of Gross Floor Area at 40 Shore Street. We have a motion that was part of our... Yes, Michaela?
I just wanted to point out clerical error. In the very first line, I typed Buzzards Bat. It should be Buzzards Bay. I'm very sorry about that. I read through it today and I went, oh, shoot. So I'm going to call myself out on that one.
I figured somebody would catch it up and read it right. Who would read this, please? Who would make the motion? Bob?
April 27th, 2021 Draft Motion That the Planning Board Vote to Approve the Application of Buzzards Bay Development LLC Under Article 39 Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw to Construct Two Additional Structures on the Site Which Will Serve as Multifamily Dwellings Constituting a Total of Three Dwelling Units at 40 Shore Street As Depicted on Plans Entitled Longshore Village Site Layout Plan Prepared for Buzzards Bay Development LLC 367 Main Street, Falmouth, Mass. 02540, dated November 5, 2019, with most recent revision date of March 24, 2021, scale 1 inch equals 20 feet. Landscape Plan Entitled Longshore Village Landscape Plan Prepared for Buzzards Bay Development LLC 367 Main Street, Falmouth, Mass. 02540, dated February 25, 2021, scale of 1 inch equals 20 feet, along with architectural plans with the following findings and conditions. Conditions: The plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the Planning Board to determine if a modifications decision is necessary. That's a standard condition. Condition two, the applicant shall enter into a local initiative program, LIP agreement, for the one affordable unit to be deed restricted and put on the subsidized housing inventory, SHI. Three, constructionists, this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. References. Four, upon completion of the construction, the applicant shall post the address for its residence for Section 99-1 of fixing of legible numbers required time limit.
May I have a second of the motion?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion of the motion? Paul?
I received two copies of the motion, both sending findings and conditions. One had conditions without the findings and the other had findings and conditions.
Yeah.
Which are we voting on?
We could actually... The full one is with the findings. The first one that you read is shortened.
Yeah, Bob didn't read the findings, though.
I read the first one without the findings. Do you want me to read the findings?
I'm just wondering which one we're voting on.
We had requested some time ago to be given a short version, considering so much of it is standard language. So here you see an example where we've been given the full thing plus the shorter one that we requested. The whole thing is incorporated into the minutes.
Correct. And that will be what is put on record, the full decision there, and that includes the findings. So if you want to add the findings into what Bob read, they can be read. Or we can just vote on it, knowing that the full decision will be put in.
Well, that's fine. Then if what Bob had read, you take out the word findings in the first paragraph if it's not including the findings.
It is, though.
It is.
The full decision would have the findings in it. This is just a shortened version to read for the public meeting, but the full one would have the findings that'll be with the town clerk and that'll be on record.
Okay. All right. So if they're...
Executive summary.
Yes. Thank you. So are there any further comments? Okay, please show your approval by raising your hand. Okay, seven out of seven. Thank you. We move on to Planning Board discussion. The first on the agenda is a multifamily housing bylaw update. And I believe you all have that, correct?
Yeah, I just have to say, great job. It's well done.
Who's got something? Somebody's got sound in the background.
Pam?
Okay. I have a couple of concerns that I'll bring up. If none of the rest of the board has these concerns, well, okay.
Pat, before we put concerns, I want to give, because there's some slim chance members of the public are listening, that we could have the Chair of our little subcommittee describe what we have here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, of course.
Thank you.
I skipped that little step, didn't I? I meant to do it. I'm very sorry about that. John, please.
Thank you. This is our rendition of the multifamily bylaw in a commercial overlay district, and we've been working on this for about two years to find out a way to offer some affordable housing in town of Falmouth in locations where the town would like for it to be instead of where it just goes on its own under a 40B. So this is not a 40B program. And it has some density components, and I think if we can get it approved with a few tweaks, I'm sure with the Planning Board, the rest of the board, it'd be very successful for the town over a period of time to add apartments and housing that people can afford to live in.
Thank you, John.
And I think a key component of it is that there doesn't require any financial subsidies from the town. And I think that's really a good point.
Thank you, John. Jim?
There is a... It does have a little bit of subsidy, although you're right, we don't have... If we're going to have them, the SSI, it has to be some subsidy, a component of it to qualify for that?
The increased density is the subsidy.
But that's what we're doing. That's the point I was trying to make.
Right, but no financial subsidy.
Okay. Charlotte? You're on mute, Charlotte.
If John and Jim don't mind, I'd like to sort of add to that. It's no longer called a multifamily housing bylaw, even though that certainly is what it is. It's called a mixed residential and commercial overlay district. Just so if it's written up in the enterprise, as we're certainly hopeful, you'll see it as mixed residential and commercial overlay district. So that what it would produce would be the opportunity to build buildings like... There are a lot of them in town, but they're all in business districts where there are commercial spaces down below on the first floor, and then there are apartments on the one and a half stories above that. And they're in town in various sizes, but they're in business districts. So that's what this receives doing is building buildings that have professional offices or retail or some kind of commercial enterprises on the first floor. They don't have to, but they can. And then living spaces above. The biggest feature aside from that of what we're bringing back to the full committee is density, that rather than being having to have single-family homes on an acre lot or less, as is common throughout town, you would be able to have a density up to 20 units per acre with the restrictions that are mentioned in here. So it creates greater density, but it keeps it in business districts. Those are the main features of this proposal.
Thank you. I would like to add more to... Oh, Pam, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say that my only request is that I think because of the work the Affordable Housing Committee has been working on, has been doing, I think it would have been, and it's not too late, but for somebody from the committee to come and present to the Affordable Housing Committee, who has been working so hard to realize the dream of affordable housing that we're actually going to call community housing. But so many things in here, things that that committee's been working on. And I think that coming to the board where this bylaw would be, you know, a wonderful way to provide for affordable housing, but I don't want to be working against each other in any way. And I think because the finality of this is to provide this overlay district and to provide affordable housing. So I would just request that somebody from this subcommittee come to the Affordable Housing Committee and discuss what you have done, because I think it's very, very important.
John?
Yes, thank you. What we wanted to do as a committee, Charlotte was on the committee with myself, and Jim was on the committee also, we wanted to fine-tune this the best that we possibly could and then present it to this board and let this board have their discussion and make it better, improve it, or leave it alone. And after that, then we can go to the general public with it. And that's really... I wanted to introduce this, and all of us wanted to introduce this to the Planning Board first. And that's... This is first, so.
Yeah, thank you very much, John.
And it would go through a public hearing process in any event, and certainly the affordable housing people are people that we want very much to support it, to contribute to it, and would be going to see them. So that's a very welcome suggestion, but it seemed most courteous to come to our own board first.
I think we had to.
Yeah. Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that one supersede the other. I just want to make sure that there is a... An understanding between these two entities that we're all working toward the same goal. And obviously, this zoning change is much more... Much more, I'm not going to say inclusive, because I'm not sure that's the right word, but the, as I said, the Affordable Housing Committee has been working so hard for months on... On a way to bring affordable housing to Falmouth. And it is far more reaching than this draft is. And I think some of the draft from the subcommittee of the Affordable Housing Committee would fit in with this, and I just think it would be a really missed... A huge missed opportunity if we didn't do that before this goes out to the greater Falmouth community.
Okay, thank you. I would like to second Bob's comment about how much work went into this, an amazing amount of work. Now, I do have some comments, my own comments, that I found it extremely helpful to have this listing of all the B2 areas that can be considered. I found it extremely helpful, and that was a lot of work. So I really appreciate that. Now, there's another sort of general, rather than a specific comment, on the body of the material. The general comment is that when Union Studios first started working with us, they had asked us to give them some direction as to whether we wanted them to work on an overlay district or a change in zoning, to rezone the reset area. And we said a change in zoning. So my concern is that if this becomes an overlay for the reset area, that there may be some loggerheads going on. When I expressed that to Charlotte, she said that she would anticipate that Union Studios would incorporate this into what they're doing. That may be true, but further to that is that if this goes to town meeting and then town meeting passes it, and then we come a year or two later with what Union Studios is doing, town meeting may just throw up their hands in exasperation and what has been going on for multiple years to build to this point with Union Studios, including all the Cape Cod Commission studies, would not have any worth. So that is a very severe concern on my part. And I don't know how that can be worked through. Jim?
We knew this when we started, and the reason why we did this is we felt that this can be done right away, that it's very clear and we have the properties, the areas all identified, and they're all business-owned and with public transportation and all the good things. And we felt that the Form-based code, which I'm very much in favor of, is going to be a harder sell and take a longer time. And because we think they're so compatible, that the Form-based code, to be honest with you, with enough design review criteria on this, it's almost the same thing as Form-based code. And I think that they won't have any trouble with doing the Davis Straits overlay district and incorporating this and maybe just one or two little tweaks. And I also wanted to say, we were trying to do this not part of the Affordable Housing Committee, because sometimes they go too far and people get worried about it. We're just trying to say, hey, this just works on its own. You know, I mean, it really is a good plan, and we try to simplify it. And we've been working on it for a real long time, and there's always been plenty of time for people to comment on it. And, you know, we've done a lot. So I think it's in great shape.
I'm not denying that. As you know, I express these concerns, and it's for further discussion, really.
Yes.
And I also know that Tom has been talking with Union Studio. And so I definitely think we need to get his input, and he will be back for our meeting on the 11th. Charlotte?
I just wanted to say, Pat, that we've spoken with you for one thing, but we've been working with Tom, and we've been working with Mr. Daphne, and this has been reviewed carefully. We've been working with others in the community, and we've made sure that it fits the new state law that just made it easier for these kinds of things that are going to create much more opportunity for affordable housing to be passed by town meeting. So that it can fine-combed from that point of view. And Tom is well aware of what Union Studio is up to, and he's been through this. So we, we three, anyway, feel very comfortable that there'll be, you know, fingers coming together when Form-based zoning finally is ready to be looked at as a finished proposal, that this will fit in very neatly. But we don't have to wait for the longer one to come, because that could be a couple of years.
Could be, could be more than that even.
And we are counting on making something so attractive to developers that they're going to do it, that this will be an incentive for them, and the sooner we get it out there, the sooner we can get affordable housing built.
Bob?
I'm just wondering, as opposed to a standalone overlay district, couldn't this just be inserted and dovetailed into the current B1 and B2 zones?
No.
No?
No, not in... No, well, an overlay district does do that.
Well, I know, but we got the conflict with the Davis Straits reset, and I was just wondering if this might be a way to resolve that, if this was just inserted into the B1 and B2 zoning.
Yeah, we don't think there's going to be a conflict, but...
There isn't a conflict.
No?
John?
No, and we also, as you look at the document, we don't want it at every B1 and B2 location. We've kind of handpicked the proper locations we think are proper that will work really well with this particular bylaw. And we really feel really confident that the Davis Straits area, this just is perfect for the Davis Straits area. Couldn't be any better for a start, that location. We think this is where it's going to get the most use, actually, although it is designed to be used in multiple locations in the town of Falmouth.
Okay. Okay, can I go into... I'd like to go into my specific comments, too, on it, because these are important, I think, for you to consider. Under affordability require... Excuse me. There is a typo under B under uses allowed by right, including sit plan, it should be site plan. So that's just a typo that I picked up. But then under the next one, affordability requirements, under C. And I've got this question about both C and D, and I need an explanation, and I'm sure it's quite logical. Under C, you're saying 25% of the rental residential multifamily dwelling units shall be affordable units. And I understand that 100% then would then be available for the SHI. My question is, why only 25% here? And then under D, it says 50% of the ownership residential multifamily dwellings, dwelling units shall be affordable units occupied by... Somebody needs to answer.
Yes. That is a legal requirement. We cannot specify that they have to be rented, but we can specify a limitation on the rental units. We don't think that'll ever happen, but that is a way to comply with state law.
Okay, that takes care of the 25%.
That's the 50%. No, that's why we did the 50%. The 50% would totally kill the deal. No one could do it. They can't make any money. But if we didn't have that option there, it wouldn't pass state law. So this is Massachusetts state law that we're trying to comply with, not that we... No one feels in our group and any consultant that anyone in their right mind would decide to do 50% instead of 25 affordable. Doesn't make any sense.
That's what I thought.
But it complies with state law, and that's...
Okay.
That's the problem.
Okay, so if it complies to state law, it's not likely to be thrown out either. I just didn't know the logic behind it. John?
We really want to incentivize the rentals. I mean, that's what the town...
Yeah, I know that.
And so the 50% doesn't make it impossible. It just makes it... It makes it more difficult.
Improbable.
And like Jim says, according to the state law, we're not allowed to just write an apartment bylaw. It has to offer both options.
Right. Right.
So this is our both options.
Okay, and Ed Curly has a question, but Pam, take yourself off mute, please Pam.
Then you can hear me.
I know.
So my, what, what I was going to say is that the 50%. Any apartments that are built are clearly going to be rentals because people don't buy apartments. They build by condominiums. So.
That's not true.
People buy.
Between, a condominium is a form of ownership. It's not a building.
Right, I know that. But what I'm saying is a rental unit is a rental unit. If somebody came in here and built 100 rental units, they're all rental. They're not, they're not ownership.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I have further questions. On the next page, development requirements. And I understand there are two different words, but they're kind of almost the same thing. And I don't want us to get into trouble. Look at E, a minimum buffer area of 20 feet is required between the development structures and abutting residentially zoned properties, except where an existing principal structure currently provides a buffer of less than 20 feet. Okay, and then you go to H, and this has to do with setbacks. In the mixed residential and commercial overlay district shall be the same as those in the business redevelopment zone. 20 feet front, 10 feet side yard setback, 10 feet rear yard setback. What I don't want to do is have people arguing that, well, they can do this by right. Instead of looking at, wait a minute, we really want a 20-foot buffer zone, we call it. And I, I understand they're two different words, setback and buffer. But I really don't want to run the risk of having an interpretation. Perhaps we need more explanatory language in there.
Perhaps we do.
Okay.
Good idea.
So that's why I'm getting to a little bit of the nitty gritty here to look at this. Also, I think it's going to be important in here to have a minimum square foot lot size on which septic tanks can be employed. Because you have to have a reserve system. If you look at J, developments shall, shall meet Title V requirements. If not connected to the town sewer and if located in a coastal pond overlay district, they shall be required to install a D night system approved by the Board of Health. But the smallest one that was talked about in here is four units on a 10,000 square foot lot. Unless that size of multifamily housing is required to connect to a town sewer. You have absolutely no possibility for reserve treatment. So I think you need to look at, okay, if you want to have 20 units on one acre, does this have to be on town sewer? That's all I'm trying to get at because there may be impossibilities for any kind of reserve system for a septic system. Jim?
We took that into consideration and we believe the Title V laws are self-governing. That it is already adds a restriction and the engineers, just like they have to engineer parking and Title, Title V and the setbacks for both the existing plan and the reserve plan restricts it, the use of the land. We didn't want to specify just, that's just built into it and they have to do it. It's the state law.
Jim, you might think they have to do things, but you and I both know over our years on the board that people get away with things that we never imagined they could do.
Well, they can't, it's a board health issue, not a planning issue is what I'm saying.
I know, let's not add to conflict. John?
We, we know that this isn't going to fit in every location. But it's up to the property owner. We, they have to abide by what is safe for the town of Falmouth also. So if, if it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit, but we can't dictate to the person. And you never know what's going to come up three years from now, five years now for waste products. I mean, we, we can't dictate that, but we know that this is not going to fit on every location. Not to, not to the maximum anyway.
I, I just want to mention that I've seen designs for leaching fields that are very narrow paths that run in very long lengths. And the engineers find ways to do them. They're all different kinds of designs and we're leaving it to the developer to get a good engineer to figure out how to deal with Title V and our laws. And that's why we did it this way.
It's not that, I'm concerned about the reserve system.
No, the reserve is part of it, Pat. I'm not, we're not, when we say Title V, I mean, reserve too. I'm talking both. We are absolutely talking both.
Okay, now, I want to point out that this is planning board discussion. And I know Ed Curly has a question, but when it's planning board discussion, unless we want to ask something specifically of somebody in regard to our discussion, we don't open it up to the general public. John?
Yeah, I just want to mention one other thing, Pat. One of the things that we're hoping for with this bylaw, should it get approved, is we have commercial properties that are old and tired in certain parts of it, that aren't two acres, aren't three acres. And we're hoping over time someone will either invest the money to make their property nicer, better looking, add some apartments on the second floor or sell their property and a, and a new owner will do the same thing. We think over time, this is really going to make a lot of tired commercial properties be refurbished.
I agree.
And under the guidelines of our site plan and design review.
Jim?
I think I can clarify some issues. We were very technical in saying two and a half stories, but that is our zoning bylaw, two and a half stories. What that means is you get two full stories and a half story because of the, the slope of the roof. If you put a totally flat roof on it, that's three stories and we're saying that's not allowed. Ed's question was something to understanding of that, but that's what the existing zoning is. So we're trying to stay consistent with the existing zoning.
Okay, but you put in 2.75 stories.
That just means the roof can go a little bit like this. It gets you another couple of hundred feet on the third story. It's opposed to a gambrel, a gambrel roof shape, okay, is, is 90%.
Okay.
Okay, and then a, a shed is 75. There's all different kinds of roof shapes that can do it. And all that percent, that half story is deciding the shape of the roof. And that's all it is.
Okay, I wondered why you put in 2.75.
Because it's a little better than two and a half. It gets you, it gets you a couple more square footage. It might get you one more 500 square foot apartment in the roof as opposed to a two and a half. Because you can't use the lower sections of the two and a half story if it's not seven feet tall. But if you change the shape a little bit, you can get another, you might squeeze in one more unit. It gives you greater density and that's the only reason why we do it. It keeps the height limitation the same.
Okay. I would like to make a suggestion. Pam wants the Affordable Housing Committee to see this. And I think there may be others. Yeah, wait a minute, I think there may be others who wish to see it and make comments on it. And perhaps we can bring it back on the 11th under a public discussion so we can have public input. And if this draft could be put on our planning board website so that people can actually see it to make comments. I don't know how the board feels about this. Would you please weigh in?
It'd be great, that's what we should do.
I agree.
We did, we just wanted to make sure that the planning board got all their input too. We're only a subcomponent of this board. And we want to make sure we're all on the same page and that we, then we take it out further because we really don't want it to be somebody else's work. We, we've got this going for a certain way and I think they'll find that it's going to work. It accomplishes their goals. And other groups have other agendas that are more outreach than just what we're trying to do.
And that's okay.
To be a townwide thing for everybody. This is something specifically for business zone property that we see an opportunity to get in. It solves an awful lot of problems.
Jim, what I, I seconded Bob's comment as to the amount of work that went into this. I said, I found it extremely tightly and carefully written. I had a few comments. There may be some others and Charlotte found one of them really that should be looked at. Maybe with more explanatory in the, in the wording. And I think, as you said, there may be other groups that have other agendas. That doesn't need to be our agenda, but to make this most efficient, I think it should be put on our website. People can see it, read it. And then we have a public discussion either on the, maybe on the 11th or maybe the, the meeting after that. But let's aim for the 11th. That we have, Bob?
Standard.
Yeah, I, I think to do this, to put it on the website, have a public discussion at our next meeting would be very helpful because this way, anybody that does have a different agenda, we can then counter that at that meeting. So we're not trying to counter it at town meeting.
Right.
That we can, we can address all these things prior to town meeting.
That is my thought. It just helps what we're trying to do, I think, to get this public discussion. It's not a public hearing, it's a public discussion. Okay, Pam?
You know, I think when we, when we talk about a different agenda, there's some edge to that that makes it sound a little bit negative. But people can have other views that are not necessarily an agenda at all. And I think this is a great way to kick off because we're going to need the support of town meeting. And I think this is a great way to open up the discussion before we maybe have other public venues for people to hear this, understand it and support it. So I, but I think we have to be, I think we have to be careful when we say, well, if others have a different agenda. No, let's say others may have some other ideas.
Right.
So, so it doesn't sound negative.
Remember how much comment we got on accessory apartments before we ever had hearings? And that was quite successful, working it through in that manner. Because you want to get as much support behind what you're doing as you possibly can before it goes to town meeting. So I think the more public review we have of it, the better. Paul, you're on mute, Paul.
I have two quick comments. One is I like the, the name change. The other question I had is very helpful, look at the eligibility paper that's attached to this. It says 16 B two and two B one. Is this the entirety of B one and B two areas in town? Or is this just a selection used for presentation purposes?
We whittled it down to this, Paul. We looked at, we looked at every site.
How many more are there?
Multiple times.
Paul wants to know how many more B twos, B ones there are.
50, 20?
I, I have to go look at the map.
Why don't we show Paul the whole list? That, that way he can see for himself. That list is part of our homework, our working papers.
The whole list that we started out with.
Yeah, just what, look at the whole list and then we gave the reasons why they were taken off. And I believe it was published to all the board if they want it. And you can chime in, that's what it's for.
I still have a copy that was sent to us probably two years ago.
Exactly, yes.
I think it's very helpful. I was just curious how many more there are.
Quite a lot.
But I answer that.
Yes, Charlotte.
I can't name them, so it's not as good an answer as, as Paul probably wants. But there aren't that very many more. But it excludes, for example, Woods Hole has a business district, but it's also an historical district. It excludes a few more. In fact, the town doesn't have very many business-owned districts. If you picture the town map, and I know we all, you know, see it in our nightmares, the ones that are the, the little red pink pieces that there's hardly any of in town, those are the business districts.
Can we call it up on the GIS and show it to people right now so they could see that?
Could I?
No.
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 I can, yes, you can. I could do it right now on my own machine.
You know, this may not be part of our discussion tonight. Perhaps we ought to leave this.
Okay.
The 11th.
Sounds like it is a part of our discussion, but we have a tool.
For the discussion with, at our next meeting, I think, fine. I think we all know where the districts are and have, like Charlotte said, we have the map in our heads, so.
Yeah, we do. Pat, before, before, I can see we're closing this discussion, but I'd like to just add something to it for just a minute. I mentioned a couple of the people who, who've really contributed a lot to this, who aren't here tonight. Frank Duffy and our own Director of Planning. But also Eric Chirkington, who has been an affordable housing advocate in Falmouth for 30 years and is responsible for a lot of the affordable housing that's already here. And he has been a very, an enormous help. I can't begin to tell you what a help he has been with this entire thing. So particularly Pam, I want you to know that the, the affordable housing community has been in our mind and we have paid attention to what they're wanting. They have not been excluded in our thoughts. It's just a process kind of thing. I don't think they have a different agenda.
John?
Yeah, I, I also, it's a good list. I also wanted to mention Carla, she was very helpful, especially in the, in the beginning. Put me in the right direction, put me in contact with people at the State House. And like, like Charlotte says, Eric was very helpful. And, and once we got this put together, we brought Tom in. And Tom had some really good suggestions and, you know, le, legal suggestions to put us on, straighten some of these items out that we probably were a little bit off on. So it's been a, a real team effort and we hope it's successful in the end. But, but, but we appreciate all the comments from this board too. It's very important to us, obviously.
Paul, did you have your hand up? Paul, do you have your hand up for a comment?
I did not.
Oh, okay. All right, so for the public who's listening, this will be on our website. We will be looking for a public discussion on the 11th and we'll look forward to any comments that they might have on this. Thank you all. Moving on, Winthrop Road, street acceptance. And you all have, I don't know that Michaela needs to show it. You all have the paperwork. We've gone over it before. The Board of Selectmen, excuse me, the Board of Selectmen did approve it last night. And so what we would need is the motion that's on the back of this that was in your packet. Yep, Bob, do you want to read it?
Sure. Planning Board Draft Recommendation. The Board supports the acceptance of the road and, and the subsequent improvements to upgrade the road for the residents under the Betterment Act. Winthrop Drive was created prior to subdivision regulations and there are no inspections by the Planning Board. The Planning Board recommends that this through street between Seacoast Shores Boulevard and Edgewater Drive East include a sidewalk.
Okay, I would need a second on that. Charlotte, okay. And is there discussion on it? Okay. May I have a show of hands? All approve. Thank you, seven out of seven. Thank you very much. Now, we have comments to the ZBA for Scranton Avenue 40B. You have a bunch in your packet here. I don't know if you've all had time to look at it or not. The ZBA is simply looking for comments on this. It is where the proposed motel was. And now they're proposing, what is it, 45 units, senior housing?
Forty eight.
Forty eight, okay.
Forty eight units for 62 plus.
Okay. So it's just comments to the ZBA on this. And I'm, anybody have any comments? I've got my own. Jim, your hand went up first.
I just, it took me 15 or 20 minutes to get myself oriented with this plan.
Right.
And I have worked across the street from it and sold three budding properties. And I know it like the back of my hand, yet the way it was presented, I actually had to come to my office, put up GIS and look at an aerial photograph to really recognize what was doing. There's so many lines in this paper. So an engineer may be able to decipher this out, but I had a real difficult time. It took me, and I, and I am really, I know it really well. And I had a hard time with it and I was going to complain about it. Then I all of a sudden figured it out. Because if you do go look at GIS, I have advantage, have a GI screen open here so you can see it. And then all of a sudden you go, oh, there it is. But there could have been an existing condition plan or, or even showing the abutting house buildings on the site to orient you. There's nothing to orient you there. It was, I found it one of the most difficult plans to read after this been presented in a long time.
Yeah, I was having your, the same difficulties, Jim. Charlotte, you were next.
Thank you. I concur with what Jim and you have said. I went down to the planning office for the first time since the pandemic closed us off. office for the first time since the pandemic closed us all in. It was really fun to be there. And what I was there for was to get the elevations. Because we never got the elevations. We didn't get to see it. And you could see on the plan that the, the re- relief on the facades is very shallow, where one part of the facade sticks out. It doesn't stick out very, very much. So it makes, it's an enormous building and it makes for a very enormous, solid, tall block. It's really ugly, really ugly. And this kind of housing doesn't have to be really ugly. I think it's a, for the people who'll be living there, it's a wonderful location for them. It's good that we can get that many units if it's possible. We don't have to put them into buildings that are ugly. Really don't. And I hope others will concur and that the zoning board of appeals will, I know that we don't have any say in what happens. It's a 40B.
Right.
But it is our town and this thing is unsightly.
And it's there on a corner that was.
Broken dormer across the top. This is a three story building with a shallow roof. Dinky windows. That's my comment.
It's a huge block construction is what you're saying, Charlotte, right?
It's an enormous city-like tenement.
And it's on a very visible corner.
Yep.
So in a regard, in some regard, we are saying, they're looking for our advice. We're saying, as our design review, we're saying it's ugly.
Yes.
And would be bad for the town on that corner in terms of visibility. It would not be a really nice place for people to love to live there. I think I'm kind of paraphrasing a little bit here. John? You're on mute, John?
I sound better when I'm on mute. My comment is that we just looked at our, our proposed bylaw. This is 80 units per acre. It's on a 20,000 square foot lot. Just as a small comparison, I'm not saying that it doesn't work here. It is on a sewer, but I just want people to understand this is 80 units per acre. We're proposing 20. So if this was our bylaw, there'd be 10, 10 rental units here. Forty five or 43, whatever it is.
Bob?
Yeah, my comment was not having any elevations as well. And hearing Charlotte and the other comments about what it looks like. Here, we've been talking about redeveloping East Main Street so that people are funneled down towards the, the harbor and then to have this big ugly thing sitting there just really is, is not good for that area and for what we want to do in the future. And it, it kind of bothers me that commercial property is, is going solely for housing. It would, I would much rather have something that's mixed use myself.
There is supposed to be. There's a little, what, 2,000 square foot?
2,452 square feet of retail space.
Okay. I, I had a, I couldn't even read this. The print is just so small.
It is.
I, I couldn't read it. So.
I gotta correct something on John's comment. I have the ability because I use GIS in these meetings. It's really a 2.3 acre lot. In, in the 22,000 that John's looking at is just one of the lots combined there. So we're, we're really getting inadequate information without more, you know, better plans.
I'm sorry, then I stand corrected.
Well, you gotta have another tool.
Plus as.
It's not fair.
You need a magnifying glass to read it.
Because we're not provided, I mean, I pushed for a long time to have GIS available at these meetings. When I was chairman, I actually made sure it was so we could answer these questions. I know it's hard for the staff to do it, but there's a perfect example of why we don't have the right information in a meeting and that shouldn't happen.
Paul, did you have a comment?
I do. I had a couple of observations. Number one, the, the same team that's put together has done several projects in Falmouth, been reasonably successful. So I was very pleased to see that. It's a great location for something like this. Access Senior Center, et cetera. They talked about landscaping to try to minimize the, the look of the place, but I couldn't tell, as everyone else said, there's no elevation. So we don't know what it looks like. I was curious whether these are seasonal or annual rentals because it doesn't really say. And I looked at the drainage on the layout here and it looks like it's about 500 feet to some drainage pit. Without much information, it doesn't say whether they're taking a roof drainage either. So I think there's some issues we need to talk about here.
Okay. So in our referral to the ZBA, you know, we can put any kind of thing in that we want to the ZBA. It doesn't just have to be limited to design or that sort of thing. And Paul is saying technically he finds this lacking for information. What really troubled me is the crossing there. These are going to be for senior citizens. The senior center is directly across the street. It is an extremely dangerous corner. And that is one thing that can either allow a requirement by the ZBA or allow them to turn the whole thing down without the complaint that it's too expensive to do it. And that is a safety factor. There needs to be a signal at that corner. We are going to, I was afraid with the senior center there, we were already going to be seeing deaths with people just pulling out there. It's a very dangerous corner. Now you've got people living there who will be crossing to the senior center. And I'm, it scares me. The safety factor is huge at that corner. Pam?
You know, in terms of our design review, when we talked about Lantern Lane and long hallways with doors off of each hallway, which is very depressing, there's not a lot of sunlight. I wouldn't, I was gonna say my parents, but I'm old, so much older than that. I just don't think there was very much thought put into this plan other than cramming as many units as they could into what was available. But this is definitely not what I, what I thought about when I would think about more density is just putting down a big, a big hollow square and then filling it up. And I just think they could have done much better. And I think they should do much better. And I, I'm very disappointed because the area is so nice and it's such a walkable area that, and it's something that people see when they come into town.
Right.
And when we talk about not fitting in with the character of the town, this is a big blight as far as I'm concerned. And I know it provides housing, but I think we could provide housing that was much more livable than this kind of housing is.
704 Main Street is a perfect example.
Exactly. And Bob Murray did listen to us and did certain setbacks to make the facade way more attractive. Jim?
I just did a quick math. This is around 40 units per acre, not 80.
Okay.
Okay, it's two, it's almost two acres. It's 1.97 acres total if you add them all up.
So it's double our proposal.
Correct.
Yeah. But that, what it does is it shows you what our 20 units per acre, how, how we took that into consideration. We didn't want to go this far. I mean, that's 40 units per acre is extremely dense.
Yeah.
And that's what it could do with the 40B.
Yeah. Uh, Bob?
Is there any way we could delay this recommendation to the ZBA until we have better information?
Michaela, can you answer that?
I'm not sure when, give me one second and let me check when this is before the ZBA.
I certainly would like to see a site plan. I mean, elevation.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
I can, I can put the elevation that we have included in the packet up to the screen if that's what the board would like right now. The one that Charlotte was able to get.
I'd like to have it before a meeting.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, there's a lot of information that is sent to the, to the ZBA. I mean, we can, we can absolutely send out the packet. And I, I believe actually Melinda sent out a link with the full information. They're, you know, 100 plus pages that we could be sending for the full application. Yeah, they're, it's a little intense. So, um, but we can, we can send out a link with the full application so that that's accessible to the board. But as far as the, all the information to print that out and send it.
It'd be too much.
Yeah.
And it's also small. Jim has the benefit of a very large screen. Mine is fairly small on my computer. So I'm not going to be able to see the kind of detail I want. But have you found when it's, when the ZBA is going to be looking at it?
Give me one moment.
Sure.
And I, by the way, I, I do have GIS up and, and we can get that up if that is something that is asked by the majority of the board.
Um, while we wait for Michaela to find that, could I just say, it's the Falmouth Housing Corporation that's putting this forward. They are a local group. These are people who should be amenable to changes that would fit better in Falmouth. They too will have this inflicted on the character of their town and might want to give it a second thought now that they hear what the reaction is.
Well, Charlotte, I was going to make a comment essentially similar to that, that I'm extremely disappointed in something that bears the title, Falmouth Housing Corporation.
Right.
That they want this to represent Falmouth on a very visible corner. They should try to make it far more attractive.
They should lower the height of the things that are closest to the corner. One thing, rather than making it so obviously three stories with a shallow roof and keep the taller parts, if they insist on having them, much further up Scranton Avenue or reducing the scale overall and making a greater setbacks within the building. I don't have the right nomenclature for that. I can't remember it right now. So that there's greater relief to the facade of the building.
Well, that's what Bob Murray did at 704 Main. He gave much greater relief to the building.
And detailing. He put in.
Yes.
Really good detailing. And I don't know what process went through for that building to have the result that it is. Maybe they too began with a barracks and had to change it, but now we've got the barracks.
They, they started with a flat front. And we strenuously objected to the look of that. And so he was quite amenable to making it a far more attractive building.
Excellent. Perhaps that will happen again.
I would hope it does. So.
Jim would know this. Where does it sit with the flood zone? Is it just out of it or?
It's just out of it. That's why it's pushed way up towards the front. If you can see carefully, the flood zone is shown on the map. It's a checkered line. It takes you a while to see it, but the flood zone is shown running through the back of the lot and it is there. But you know, it should be color coded or some way to see it. This is a really difficult map to read, but it, you can see it now. If you look there, the checkered line, the flood plain is shown there. So, so only a piece of the parking in the bottom, in the southeast corner is actually in the flood plain, which is appropriate.
Yeah.
Sure.
For now.
For now.
For now. Ten years it'll be different.
Have you been able to find it, Michaela?
Not sure when it's going before the ZBA. I do see in the email that on April 7th was when the 30 day letter request was sent to the Board of Selectmen. But I'm not, I, I tried looking back through emails and I, I can't seem to find when it's going to be going before the zoning board of appeals. I will say, I do know that the applicant had planned to provide for the zoning board a sketch showing the pedestrian view from the streetscape as you were standing on the street and what the building would look like. I'm not saying that that will ultimately change the way anybody feels about the building. I'm just letting the board know that that was something that was discussed.
Okay. So Michaela can't find when it goes before the ZBA. Would the board like her to create a, a letter, note, whatever, a referral to the ZBA with what we have said tonight in somewhat far ranging discussion and say more to follow, given the opportunity? Jim?
I think given the size and scope of this project, that renderings of how it appears from a couple of different directions should be required.
Before any comment?
Before, yeah. We, you're asking people to picture things that normally you get a rendering that shows you, you know, it's.
Okay, but the point is for the ZBA to ask for a referral from us that they can actually use, if they have to hear it before, well, no, wait, if they haven't opened it yet, they can hear it, but our referral can come in. They don't make a decision immediately.
Yeah, our referral could be, it looks okay to us.
Yeah. But it could also be our, we could delay our referral now until they hear it and we get more information and then we can render a referral to them, I believe. Is that correct, Michaela?
Um, yeah, we can do that. And, and also just, just as a FYI, on Friday, April 23rd, Melinda sent out the full application for the 40B. So that would include the renderings that are included in the packet with all the full information and the full application. And I'm happy to forward that again.
In my envelope.
No, this was an email that was sent to you because the full application would be many, many, many pages and it would be too long and too.
This is key information. And no matter how full the packet, this isn't going to change.
Right. And that's how it looks. And we're concerned about from the design standpoint, how it looks.
So the, just to go over, I have the buildings are unsightly and would be, and would not be welcoming to residents as a key head point.
Or the community.
Or the community even.
As the gateway to Falmouth Harbor.
Yeah.
And then uh, that there needs to be a signal at the corner for crossing to senior center for safety issues.
You should, you should offer that by saying it's dangerous.
Yeah.
That number of people perched on that corner, that close to the senior center creates a real safety issue.
You could even say it's a life and death issue, which it is.
I believe there's been a fatal accident there in the last five years that I'm familiar with.
Vivian almost witnessed a fate fatal this week. A woman pulled out and would have broadsided the guy. He went up over the sidewalk to avoid being hit.
Wow.
Oh, my God.
Okay.
I just remembered from the McMahon study that was done years ago. I believe this was given it like a B minus or an F for intersections of being so dangerous.
Yeah. It was a very, very dangerous corner.
And they actually proposed in the David Straits thing of making it a right turn only because they didn't want people coming left, coming from Scranton. And then I pointed out to them, that's just to send everybody down Queen Street. It's not going to work. You've got, you know, you can't just say no.
It could be pointed out then that the McMahon study pointed out how very dangerous this corner is.
It was a failing grade intersection. They have some score that they put on it?
They did, yeah.
And this one's failed.
So we have all of that, but I, do you want to put any more definition in as to what we are looking for a better design, like greater articulation of the streetscape part of the building? Or is there any way that you wish to give a little bit more detail to the ZBA?
Penetration. We don't want Jim to get fenestrated again. So.
Roof line, doors, I mean, doors and windows make a huge difference and so do roof lines. I, Bob, I was going to say that, but I decided not.
Paul?
Michaela, do you have a copy of that McMahon report?
Uh, I believe I do.
I could send it to you if you need it. Let me know.
I think it's online though, Paul, too.
Yeah, I think it is.
Probably so.
I, I want, and, and this thought process has come right now. I believe we have to tell them they have to find, we know that that's a dangerous intersection. It's being identified as failing and we'd like to see the impact of this increased traffic that this do on, on that intersection. Because one of the only reasons of 40B that we can do anything is safety. And that'd be one reason we might actually get them to do something instead of saying, no, we can't. That, I believe it's safety and public health. And that could be one of the few things the planning board gets to weigh in on here. And I don't think we want to, we want to make it clear. We'd like to see a study on that and how it improves the score of that intersection or, or at least keeps it the same. Making it worse is not acceptable.
I think it has to improve it because of a senior resident, 65 plus.
I was hope so. I was hope so. I would hope so. But anyways, I believe that's our strongest argument on the site.
Yep. So Michaela, I think you have enough information to write something to the ZBA. the ZBA with, also with a maybe continued.
Yeah, I can, I can write this up, and then I think we can bring this back to the May 11th meeting.
Okay.
And present it to the board, and the board can take a look at it, the way we've been doing it in the recent past.
And I, I know I'd want to go into the planning office and see all these plans.
Yeah, I can, I can forward the email again, just so, just so you guys have it in your email.
I've got it. It's not that. But I've got a tiny, tiny screen. I want to see a plan that I can actually
I don't know that the planning office would have a large plan. That would probably be in the zoning board office. Just because 40B applications go through the zoning board of appeals.
Well, we can go to the ZBA office, too, and see it. So, Bob, you had a comment?
Yeah, just a question. What made them decide to make it for 62 and over?
They had some, they, the applicant had stated that they had done some market research, and that they felt that, based off of the facts, figures, and numbers that they had looked at, that they were between 55-plus and 62-plus, but senior housing seemed to be the market.
Yeah, because Scranton Ave has a lot of senior housing on it already.
Right.
It does. You know, we're trying to make this town a little younger. And I would think that would be a great location for the younger folks who may live, who would like to live and work downtown, close to transportation and all that. So it was just a question. Just wondering.
Yeah, that, that did come up at a town hall meeting, sorry, town hall staff meeting, I should specify that. And that was asked, and yeah, I guess just the research that the applicant had done.
Okay. Okay, are we ready to close the discussion on this now?
Melinda, I've been looking through, Melinda, I'm looking through my emails, seeing if I could find this complete packet. I can't. It might be there, but I'd appreciate your sending it again.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll send it to the whole board. Just, I know some people have said they have it, but just that way, everybody has it.
That would be great.
Okay. Moving on, comments to the ZBA for the Lewis Neck Road 40B. I'm just gonna paint an overview, if you will. Tom sent something through to Noreen before he left. You have that in your packet. We have had every kind of comment possible on this. As you all know, there is a covenant in place that required a road. The road was just put in on Friday. There has been no engineering review of it to see whether it meets any of the requirements at this point. Now, all of that is pretty well a moot point, because there is a covenant in place that requires one house, until and unless the road is improved. The covenant is a legal document. So what we're dealing with, and Frank said, well, it may or it may not be valid and all that, but it doesn't matter, because we cannot discharge the covenant. The town has to discharge the covenant. It has to go through to town meeting, because it's, the covenant belongs to the town. So from our perspective right now, we have no further action to take on Lewis Neck Road, to discharge anything, to approve anything. It's in the hands of the engineering department and the town as a legal matter. Now, does anybody have any further comment on this?
Yeah, I have one comment.
Paul?
Yeah, I have one comment. There was a, I agree with what you said, but I also looked at the overall site plan. And we approved one house on this lot, on this lot.
Correct.
They're asking for four. And if I look at the site plan, it looks like there's only three houses here.
That's what it is now. It's only three.
So have they reduced it from four to three?
Yes.
I don't know, because I didn't even look at that.
Application anywhere.
It could be a duplex, you don't know.
They keep asking for
No, they're just three single-family homes.
Okay, I know nothing about that, because it really is out of our purview at this point. So I think all the comments that have been made to the, to the ZBA in regard to Lewis Neck Road have been made. And we, it's out of our hands.
Wasn't there a letter from Town Council saying that the, it sounded to me, the way he wrote it, that the that with three houses and the new road, that it was, that the I'm just trying to find where.
It may be a moot point, because the requirements have been met. We don't know that the requirements have been met, because the road just appeared on Friday, and engineering has not even had a chance to go out there and inspect it. So that's why I don't see, aside from the fact that it's a legal matter, I don't see how we could even comment on it.
Oh, we're done with it.
Yeah, let's move on.
Okay. Okay, so we're all done with that. Are there any announcements? Okay. I don't have any general correspondence. Has any come in, Michaela, since I've gotten my packet? I doubt it.
No, none has come in.
Okay, and future agenda items? I think we're pretty well filled up for the meeting of the 11th. Is that correct?
Yes, we, I made a note that we will be adding the multifamily, oh, excuse me, mixed overlay.
Yep.
The mixed residential and commercial overlay district as a public discussion.
Right.
Sorry.
And I look, I really look forward to that. I hope we get a lot of good commentary on that. But also, future agenda items are things that the board would like to see come on to future agendas. Okay, I see a big zero at that.
When's the next time we're gonna be talking to Union Studios, as a board?
I don't know. Tom has been talking with them very regularly, from what I understand, and it could very likely be the following meeting there. Okay? So that would be, what, 14 days? It'd be about the 25th of May. Unless there's something intervening in there. Paul?
It'd be nice to get an update on the assistant town plan situation.
Well, hopefully we will. And Michaela, you can put that on for Tom, if he can update us on that.
Sure.
Because I know, I'm pretty sure interviews have taken place before he left.
I believe my knowledge was that interviews had taken place prior to him leaving, and I can say this without lying, I truly have no idea how those interviews went, or how the process went, or how anything. It's nice when you're in the dark sometimes, because then when you say, I don't know, it's true.
I think, I think they were interviewing probably just up to about the hour that Tom left. I don't know. But I think that to be true. So I don't know that any decisions will have been made by the time he gets back. Maybe they will have. I have no information on that. Okay? Charlotte?
Our other hanging business is recertification. Town abbreviated meeting passed the money, so maybe Tom could fill us in on the scheduling for that.
Ah, yeah.
Now that we have consultants back.
Because I think he was notifying Bob and Bob that they could start
Right.
working on this again. So there may have been some movement on that in the month that he, well, almost a month that he will have been gone, three weeks, I guess. So that, Paul?
Make a motion with adjournment.
Second.
Okay. We are
Bye, everybody.
At 7:47.
Bye-bye.